Recording. Can, can everyone hear us? Signal some way?
Just wait. Okay.
Yes, yes.
I used all their fingers.
This is good. Calling to order, this is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health, the Board of Selectmen's Office, March twenty second, twenty twenty one, five thirty, five P M, I guess. It's being conducted remotely in conjunction with Governor Baker's orders, emergency orders of March twenty twenty. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
There's an agenda and a fact.
Is anyone recording the meeting other than us? For posterity or for any other reason? All right, the first item on the agenda, we starting a little early today because we wanted to discuss. Mary Ellen's proposal about the guidelines for emails, meeting minutes and other materials and and how the Selectmen's Office runs and what we could do better or worse, whatever.
Okay, so I, I had distributed a reflection sheet for those people that are just joining us this week. Asking various questions about how the board operates and then got responses from the Selectmen and then have compiled those responses. So we have, if the thing appeared more than once, I put it on the list, a couple I've combined because for brevity. The, if you want, I can go over them or you can just read them. I don't care. The first question was one of the three best things about the board's meeting. And the response, first response was open discussion of issues and ideas with sometimes strong disagreement but civility. Two, meetings are limited in duration and task oriented. And three, the board engages in long-term planning. And I thought those were probably accurate and pretty significant and any comments or changes I can make. One of the three things the board should try to improve. The first one was agenda preparation and supporting materials. And this week we seem to be more organized in that than we have in the past, but that was an issue of.
Well, Bob's gone, Bob's gone off to look for, because I have nothing.
So we're wondering what happened. So we still have to, that's still an issue that's on, that's on the plate. Delegation. And I didn't know exactly what that meant myself, but yours, I think.
This is what I, this is what I meant by that. I find that if I, I'm not quite sure who to, who to contact in the Selectmen's Office. If I send an email saying, could you do A, B, or C? I sent it to Bob and the Selectmen's, I got it to Pam. I don't know who does that. Is it better if we just send it to Bob and Bob can direct Pam? You know, Don wants to get a copy of the chief's contract. Or, you know, could you type up this letter or whatever? So I don't, you know, and so why, then I find out happens and it either doesn't get done. Or, you know, because I'm up at four o'clock in the morning sending emails. You know, if I don't get a response by six, I'm saying, what's going on? You know?
Okay, so that should say, that should say.
So, so, you know.
Clarify that.
So, so we direct this, select me, should we direct everything to Bob and then he can say, Pam, can you do this? Jane, can you do this? You know what I mean? So.
Well, and that's good, but there's a problem with that age that we have. Hate to say it, our job as Selectmen is twenty-four seven. And when you say direct to Bob, there are things, just like, for instance, say it was that accident that happened. You know, you and I, we, we need to answer what's going to be happening. Emailing Bob is not really going to help. We're fortunate that usually he's on it. But it's also unfair of us to ask him to be twenty-four seven as well. So I think there has to be.
I'm not talking about information. I'm talking about.
Performance of tasks or?
Yeah, performance of tasks, you know, can you get a copy of the chief's thing for me? Or I'm going to drop a couple of letters off, you know, for.
It's extraordinary stuff, but there are times when you might need something right away. Hey, that's the thing and I need it. I think there is one advantage of A, that we all now have access to the One Drive. As we make a better effort to make sure that these things are in accessible to us. We have twenty-four seven access to hopefully everything everybody else does. Which also can save us from being anyhow O M L and the issues. Hey, you want to look it up? Look it up. Let's not email it around.
No, that's, that's been very helpful.
But, but maybe we can clarify. So I'll just clarify beside that. Three is more frequent communication coordination with other departments and boards.
Yeah.
Okay, and that was, you know, to have them come in on other occasions other than just, I guess.
We've done that. But, but the other thing I have there, it's another one of my things. I give an example. I asked for everyone, I asked the silicon to send out an email if I could get all the budgets, what they put in for their budget. So we could, when we do the salary thing, we could kind of compare where we are. Only one department responded. So, you know, so I don't know if it went out. I see, I don't know if it went out or we just.
So did you ask one of our staff to send that out?
Yes, yeah, that's, so I don't know if it went out, but one department, only one department responded. If I ask them directly from me to them, fine, but I try not to do that because I really don't, I mean, I just, I don't know, I don't think we should.
Right.
It's a good, it's a good topic for Bob to bring up at his department staff meeting on Wednesday and it might be a better. You know.
Okay.
Okay, number four was reorganizing here to organizational workflow structure, which is the same as delegation, really. It's just a different wording of the same question, but I didn't, I put it in because it seemed a little more extensive. And then five was act only as a board, not as individual members and have all selection, call select and get the same information. And, and I think that, that that is, is really an important one to me in that I don't feel that I have the same information that other people have, but for whatever reason, I don't know. And I do think we should act as a board, that if we want A, we should say that as a board, we want A, not I want A, would you give me this? Or, you know what I mean? I think it's, it's more productive and it's what our role is. So that would be something I think we should address. Okay, the guideline for emails is to abide by the policy and the policy manual, which is fine. And that was, that's okay. So we don't need to do that. Minutes posted within two weeks and agendas by noon on Friday with all supporting material in one document. And I think that that's good. If everything can come in one, they'll swoop. So you just download that one thing and then you don't have to go here and here and here and here, you know, don't you agree?
I agree, and I think the fact that, and you and I talked about this before, breaking up into attachments instead of embedded has worked out much better.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
But I don't see why they can't also be after emailing, again, be a folder for current week. If I don't want to download it, I can go online, much easier with the laptop, but make that effort as well.
So what are you saying? Do it again, please?
No, no, I'm saying there'd be a folder again on the One Drive.
Yeah.
That information is also up in the folder.
Oh, okay. That information on the One Drive, you have Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
And subfolders, one of his minutes, one's agenda, a couple of others. Under agendas. From Wednesday onward, it's posted. The way we typically do it is that I will put together what I think we have for the following week. Send it out to Don. As soon as he approves or we modify it or whatever, I send it over to Pam. And well, when she hasn't been here, then I do the packet. Our new approach is I send it to her and say, put together the packet. And we're now going to be sending it out as attachments so that you can have those.
To the minutes, to the agenda.
To the agenda, yes.
That's good. How about though, you know, because I like going back and looking at some we discussed weeks ago or something like that. So rather than we have agenda, we have agenda two, one, dash, oh, three, dash, two, two. So that was the agenda for that day. And then they, we, tonight we talk about the fact, hey, remember a couple of weeks ago, we were looking over that possible pilot that Blue Wave brought in on such and such a date. And I go back to the attachment we got on that agenda day. I am one, for instance, I'm a guy, I don't throw away email. I have email going back to when Edison first invented email.
Edison.
I'm older. So again, same thing, I keep, I think everything should be on the One Drive. And sorted so we can find it.
So on the One Drive, there will be agendas, we will pull up the agenda.
The agendas are there and they are there.
I know, I know, I use that right now. They're there by date.
So this is agenda oh, three, two, six. Sorry, two, one, oh, three, two, two. That's today's, that's today's folder. Next week, he's making a new folder that says agenda oh, three.
So every, in that folder is everything we need. It's the agenda and everything else you need.
And then next week, you go back, we'll look at the attachment that we sent out the week before. Oh, there it is. So now.
Later on, could you add the minutes to that?
Exactly.
Can you, do you, do you understand?
No, I, I, yeah, we can. Not only, we can have a folder for each agenda, which would contain not just the agenda itself. But we can also put all the other documents that are.
Yeah, yeah. I understand that now.
I have these.
So there's no attachments with those. No, there's no attachment in here.
Right.
So now this would be a folder called.
Yeah.
Agenda boom, boom, and everything would be in there.
Got it, got it. Okay, so that can be done.
We beat that down.
But monthly focus on one issue.
Talk about the minutes.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, minutes, go.
Okay. I think on the minutes, they could be, still could be a lot shorter.
I agree with that.
You know, I don't think, I think, I, if it's a if we could have, I don't know, take a topic. Like police budget, okay? Just, you know, discuss the budgets of, you know, fire department, police department. I don't think we need to have John said, we should get a new police cruiser, Mary Ellen.
I didn't say anything about getting a new.
Well, you actually, you said three, but I said one, just to make you look good.
Yeah, I get it.
We've talked about, you and I had the same, same view on this before.
Yeah, and I think.
Because this particularly says we're recording.
We got a video, you can say, okay, go back to the video if we needed it for some particular.
Cut to the chase.
Cut to the chase.
So we want briefer minutes. Summary minutes, particularly with the video.
With the minutes should be a brief overview of the meeting with highlights, you know, like the budget was discussed with budgets being presented by the fire, the, boom, we're onto the next issue. Now, we don't want to have all the discussion unless it's a motion, all the motions have to be in it.
Well, I, I think when we had like Senator Lesser here, I think he'd like every word he gave us in the minute.
Mailed everyone.
In triplicate. Okay, so that's, that's the minutes, okay? And you can relay that to Pam for us, can you please? Thank you. And then the monthly focus on one issue, somebody put that in, I don't, it wasn't me, but I, I guess that's okay. And we sort of do that anyways, one or two issues. And then meet biweekly, which I had brought up in another meeting. And.
Yeah, I'm still back and forth, I'm still back and forth on that one.
Well, the reason, the reason I favor it is because I think it forces decisions, A, because you can't put it off. If you put it off for three days, it's not even putting it off, you know what I mean? So you say, well, we won't decide today, we'll decide next Monday. That's, that's almost right now. Number two, I think it forces the people that work for us, the town administrator, the administrative assistant, whatever, to spend most of their time, a good deal of their time between our minutes, just getting ready for the next minute, for the next meeting. And takes them away from other tasks that they might want to be doing or would be important to do or whatever. So those are my arguments for biweekly. I can meet weekly forever, but I mean, it just, it just seems to me a more productive way of doing it. I also checked with a couple, couple of different places and biweekly seems to be, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, Mr. Marco. But biweekly seems to be the trend of where people are going with these meetings. So just so we know.
Good points you bring up. One thing I would say, though, when you bring up that if, rather than kicking along, but we need a little more information. We get that, but now we're waiting two weeks until we can make a decision on it. We always have the option to post every week and if the chair decides, you know, there's nothing pressing. If you go back historically, I don't know, Jim's on here or whatever, but we've always had the summer schedule.
Yeah, I remember.
Right, you know, we, we didn't or didn't do it, you know, based on.
If we.
Well, if you post and don't meet, I think that that looks a little inefficient. To post, suppose, and then say, we're not going to meet. I mean, that just doesn't, doesn't impress me.
If we meet biweekly, that'll double our hourly pay.
Exactly, exactly. Then we have to do it with, then we have to do it with all the other workers and then they go cost of fortune.
I will say some of the biweekly ones though, or your typical, I'd say manager type ones.
Yeah, the other town managers, where they run everything.
Right, so those are more biweekly ones. When you look at the selectman ones where they are the.
Okay, I, I, I think for my preference, I would like to leave biweekly on a list of things just to revisit periodically. Don't have to do it now, doesn't have to be done this week or this, and we could try it over the summer even, you know, like, like John just said. So does it work over the summer? Is it, is it productive? Okay, what are the three main things we would should consider immediately to enhance our performance? The first one is establish a government study committee to conduct periodic reviews of the functioning of town government. This is an idea that the, we had a bit of a discussion with the advisory committee about looking into how the town is structured and what, how appointments are made and what, who, how many people are elected and all that kind of discussion happened at the advisory committee hearing. And I also understand in talking to other, other people that government study committees are a thing that exists in a number of communities, not just, this isn't an idea that we are creating, okay? I think that it would, it would be important to do number two, number two and number one sort of go together. And number two is restructure town government to minimize elected boards and committees and give selectmen in town administrative control over appropriation, staff, et cetera. I think that will, would definitely make us more efficient. Because now we have no administrative structure, really. And, and we have people acting on their own initiative, their own, you know, and they know their jobs well. And so they know what they should be doing. But I think that it's, an organization is more efficient and effective if there's a clear chain of command and there's a clear, a clear structure. So. Feedback.
Well, I, I think, I think at the advisory committee, one of the things that, that was, was discussed, we did discuss it for quite a while. Was that they're feeling that the a lot of the town employees are, feel responsible to the board, the particular board they work for. If I got this right, which I think someone of the advisory committee members, they felt they responsible to the board they work for, but not so much to the town and they considered, they should consider it of town employees rather than board employees.
Yeah, I got a kind of a different thing and having, being a person who had served as chair, like the planning board. We had our clerk Judy Jackson and she worked for the planning board. That was her role. I think, and I heard from them, this is something that's been kicked around for years, you probably recall. As they said, some of the roles that are elected treasurer, town clerk, tax collector are more typically appointed in other towns because it's a, I won't say it's performance or resume.
In order to get that job.
We have been blessed in our town and having people run for those that have done the job admirable. But the danger is always there that it turned to a popularity contest. And Bob Brown runs, who just wants the job, but really has no background in it. And those that are dangerous. I, I personally am not keen on some of the other boards because I think we're, we're big in getting people involved. On the other hand, and this is go back to President Truman's statement when he said, you only give me an economist with one hand, I'm tired of hearing, on the other hand, Mr. President. When you have elected boards, and I've heard this from a number of people, some people just don't like to run. Some people love to serve, they'd love to serve if you asked them, oh, but I have to run for it? Can't you just appoint me to it? And there are probably people like that. But I do like the fact that we're a town of volunteers and running. I think there's a mix to be had here. I go back to Ms. Glover's point, she's not wrong, that some roles need to be looked at. That perhaps need to be more appointed by the board. But I think you'll see, those are probably the ones we talked about with advisory. You know, the more the full-time ones as opposed to.
Then should, then should we be thinking about establishing some kind of a government study committee? Which I guess is the end phrase for this, for this task. And ask them to have us define what their charge is and what the membership would be and whatever. And then have them come back and report to us to see which way to go forward.
Perfect role for Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. It's a perfect thing to do and ask for a couple of townspeople to sit with them, et cetera, things like that. That's what they do.
Well, from, from, from my knowledge of government study committees, I understand that they exist, they continue to exist. So they review it periodically. They review it today and then a year, two years, whatever, whatever number of years down the road, they do another review. And they're a, they're a reporting, a reporting body that reports to the Selectmen. Which I think is a good thing in that times change and needs change and, you know, I, so I think that's, that's healthy. I, and, and I think that we would like I would like the committee to be a local committee as opposed to Pioneer Valley. I think we should use them as a resource. I think that they're a good resource to have, but I'm not sure we should give this task over to them. Because I'm not sure they know us as well as we know us.
Yeah, I think if you go back to what they've done in the past and before your time, we used them back in ninety-nine and two thousand for a large zoning bylaw rewrite.
I remember that.
Right, what we call the Miggs Committee. But we had, and I recall it was on the thing, probably get told, we had seven or nine townspeople and they were just the people working for us. So you, they can assume that role where they're not.
They can be like facilitators.
Right, that's what they do.
Okay, so I'll keep, we'll keep that on and, and try to come up with how we're going to do it as another meeting. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. So then three is create as an agenda checklist. I don't know what really that means, but that's fine. Four.
Well, does that mean, does that, does that mean, I don't know what it means either, but, but, but does it mean, you know, each week? You know, it's going to be, this is, we got a pretty set up as it is, minutes, all business, new business.
I think, I hate to say it, I look at the agendas from other towns. I think our agenda could be a little more, I don't want to say formalized, but we've talked before about having correspondence better written out there, having other things, you asked for like names and stuff. We could be doing a much better job on our agenda and I think maybe that's what that's about.
Okay, so I'm going to put revise agenda format and I will try to look up some different suggestions and bring that back to you next week or some. See what they're using. I, I, I thought that one of the things, when, when I saw this, I thought that maybe the town administrators report should be put to a different spot. In that, by the time we get to him, we're all saying, okay, let's get out of here. I don't know if it should be first and also that, that many of the topics that he was going to share have already been shared. So he just goes, well, I don't have to talk to you about that. I don't have to. So I don't know if that's, if it's something that, we can just consider that when we do the.
Because I think I don't know how it would work if he gives it first and then we come to on the agenda.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll work on that. Conduct an annual assessment of the board's functioning. That's just a health thing to keep in mind. Institute goal-setting evaluation systems for all employees. Do we have that now? And do we use it?
No.
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 Okay, so I think that that's, so instead of institute.
Into contracts.
Pardon me?
We even write it into contracts. For example, the chief of police contract.
Yeah.
It's in there.
Okay, but for, for regular, regular employees within this, this town hall, we have an evaluation system for all of them. So then we, we really have to come up with a, we, we have the instrument, we just don't have the doing it.
Yeah, the boards would be responsible for the particular person, right?
Or the top, or the town administrator. Right?
We'd have to get input for the board because they work, if they're doing the things for the board, how will the town administrator know if, if employee X is getting the minutes done on time?
Permits organizing.
Organized.
Really typically.
No, some work directly for the board of select.
Right, for those, but I think we're talking all in place. For instance, we did the evaluation for the planning board clerk. Because as Don said, who knows the job better than the planning board?
Right.
Okay, so the, so the, the, those that work for a board, the head of the board would, or the board itself would conduct the interview or the.
An instrument for them to go by.
And they have an instrument already, right? You're saying?
No, we have an instrument. It isn't being.
But it exists.
Implemented, yes.
Okay.
Now, I think what it would will need to be done here is that the board will have to adopt a policy. Requiring every board and committee to do an evaluation of the staff people. Because I can see a situation again where.
You will say, do it.
Some will, some won't. And then I think the proper role of the town administrator, because I'm here every day, is to do evaluation of department heads. Some would say you do an evaluation of department heads that are under the board of selectmen. And some would say, I'm not accountable to the selectmen, I'm, you know, accountable to one of the voters or whatever. Or to a board or a committee. So.
Those are good points. The one thing there, this all, because where, that's the carrot, where's the stick? How do you use, how do you use enforcement? Where's enforcement come from for something like that? You're saying I'm going to require everyone to do that evaluation. And if you don't. It impact, well, the stick could be, if you will, it impacts the ability for the town to justify.
Salvation. Right, 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 right. Right, I think that the, so and, and I think that it should be goal-setting and evaluation. So that the employees should have a goal for the year. My goal for my year is to, whatever that goal is, okay? And the evaluation is a piece of that piece, but it's also, did you get, did you meet your goal? You go lose ten pounds, did you lose a ten pounds? You know, or whatever the goal is. I don't, I don't mean to be looking at you, Don. I'm so sorry.
Wow, I moved to a turn, I moved to a turn.
Hostile work.
And then promote decision-making and minimize board of selectmen role in administrat, oh, there's no comedy. Board of Selectmen role in administration. I think that as we have, as we have evolved from where the, where the selectmen were in charge of the town and, and we're running the whole town to an administrator. Sometimes our roles can get confused, it seems to me, in that we do more than we should do. And sometimes maybe Bob thinks we do less than we should do. We don't make the decision that we should make. We don't put the policy in place or whatever. And so I think, I think we have to be careful that we are the board of selectmen and not the administrators of the town. I guess is what, what that is. So, comments?
I agree, but many times it's the final, it's, it's really, it's really hard, it's really hard.
The buck stops here, there's the sign. And again, I go back to the difference when we talk about this administrator slash manager. You know, what you talk about is really, if we have the town manager, that's a hundred percent the way it is. We give counsel to the manager, but the manager runs the show. And as the administrator, the administrator works for the board of select. It's tough to.
Well, the town manager works for the board as well, too.
Not so much. No, there's usually a city, it's more of a council manager. So it's, it's tough to minimize.
Well, my, my, my concern is, okay, that, first of all, I, I have a real concern that we act as a board. Okay, that, that our decisions be made by three people, not by one. Number two, I think that it's important that the, the administrator be given the amount of independence necessary to operate the town. And if he goes to a meeting and I'm sitting at the meeting with him, then it would appear to me, if I were the person sitting there, that I would have more input, more, my, my, my position would be more valuable, what I say would be more heard. I don't know. It just seems to me that that doesn't allow the administrator to take the reins and say, okay, this is, this is what we want to do, guys. Here we are. Let's have a discussion about A, B, C. And I think that that has to be addressed so that we can have the administrator work as effective, effectively and efficiently as possible and take on some of the roles that are more appropriately going to his office. That's that's how I would see it. But because I think it's, it would be very frustrating, like you say, when you ask for whatever you asked for from somebody recently and it didn't come. I mean, who do you, who do you go to? I mean, the administrator has to have that authority, I think. Mr. Authority, Mr. Administrator, what do you think?
I would say that the ability to work administratively and do the routine things that an administrator does in Hampton. Much of my time is that of a meeting planner. Take a look at the minutes, fifty-two sets of minutes a year. That's a lot. Planning meetings every week is something that the board may want the administrator to do. But it does take a lot of time. And it often takes time away from other projects that you expect the administrator to do. It's a trade-off and, and that's, that's the reality. That's the reality.
So that goes to the issue of biweekly meetings, but does it go to the issue of you having the authority to make those decisions?
I think it would be a good idea to come up with a list of administrative duties. And have the board agree to it. So that we do have the separation between policymaking, which is the proper role of the board of selectmen. And administration of the policy, which is typically the role of the town administrator and the office staff.
Would you go back to the reason we, the town voted to get a town administrator? Would you go back to the reason we, the town voted to get a town administrator, was that we had an office staff here. Cash, going back to, you know, other personnel, that, well, one time it was forty hours, now it's thirty. Or something like that, thirty-two hours, so we picked up a town administrator, effectively doubling the hours in this office. And to say that there are tasks that aren't being done, when we doubled the personnel and hours working for the board of selectmen. To me, I hate to say it from a business standpoint, things aren't being done efficiently. And if you hired people and you doubled the staff working for you, and then things are not getting done, you have to look and say. Wh- what's being done wrong, what's the effectiveness in these, cuz that's what we did.
So your point is, would say.
So my point is that, I mean, you're talking about one way of organizing it, but I look at the fact that we saw a need in this office to. Expand the hours, but maybe expand the personnel to do more, because it seemed like it was. The task was growing more than the hours we had, and in fact, we doubled the hours. And then to say, oh, my gosh, it's it's gotten even bigger, would mean that we didn't have a good assessment of the the needs in this department. Yeah, we doubled it to, not not to you cuz you're limited to twenty, but originally when we started, it was a full-time, thirty, thirty-five, forty hours. You had then seventy hours of work available in this office. Stepped up from thirty. There is no, in my mind, there's no way the job should not be getting done. We're fortunate that Bob has been able to do other things, we're doing a better job in grants. Him seeking grants, stuff like that, based on his knowledge, et cetera, but we have more than adequate.
My issue is not that the job is not being done, my issue is more that it's not be done, being done efficiently, effectively with accountability. So when I, when, so when I'm saying is, um, people have to know their role. And once you know your role, then you act within that confines, this is our role, so if it seems to me. You can say, you don't agree, but it seems to me that the board's role is policy, we're gonna make the policy, we're going to establish. You know, how we, how we see the town going forward, okay? I think the administrator's role is to see that is administered, that it is, that that everybody is doing our bidding, you know what I mean? They're they're fulfilling our wishes, and they're are trying to, and doing the best job that they can. I think when we fall down, I I think we fall down, I'm not sticking to policy, and I think administratively, it it maybe falls down. Um, because he doesn't have the authority to act. Because of all the elected boards and all the, all these other people that have other people that they're responsible to. You're gonna say something, Mr. Merkel, you're.
I'm just gonna say, among other things, there's an enormous amount of activity here, enormous. Uh, take a look at the sub folders, the folders. My last count, there were ninety-seven different. Activities and tasks that are underway in one way or another. And so, and plus, I mean, look at what the board has been doing the last year, year and a half, and. The big issues, the ambulance service, the dispatch issues. Uh, I mean, those things consumed an enormous amount of time and required a lot of research. Um, so, I think this, it's a combination of. An upsurge in activity. The determination to affect. Uh, efficiencies and change, save money, and which I think has been done. Uh, but, um, there's, there's just a tremendous amount of activity going on. Add to that, a blizzard of email, I mean, I mean, an absolute blizzard of email. If everybody, I'm sure, uh, in municipal government experiences, it's from. Not not particularly from the selectmen, I mean, that's the very minor part of it. It's from other employees in the building, it's from citizens, it's from those who are involved with projects. I mean, I must get. From Ameresco, just the Ameresco project itself. They just keep coming in, uh, because there's a need there, it's legitimate, there's a need. And so, that's, that's the time equation. It is responding to email, and I find that if we don't do that. Uh, in a timely way, if we neglect email for something else, to do some other kind of work. Something pops into the inbox that requires attention, and you miss it, you know, you miss it.
Look, it's back to, I mean, that's where Bob's time is there, I also think that we are the board of selectmen, there are elected boards, and I wouldn't wanna delegate. Our role as selectmen in terms of meeting with those boards, I like the fact we have the, the parks board in to talk about what issues, I like the fact, you know.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't think we should be delegating that to the town administrator, okay, you're in charge of all the people in the town hall.
Well, there's a difference between, between having open communication with them and responsibility for them. I mean, I think we're the ultimate responsibility, we're the responsibility for Bob, and we're responsible for these other people, but I think that.
We're not responsible for, and that's where you have to get a sense of.
That's why we have to clarify. This this government study committee has to, has to figure out what the heck is going on, I think.
Even in the park board, for instance, the parks are, they have, and it's, I think it's MGL authority over park land. You know, we can't as selectmen go and do anything at Memorial Park without their permission. That's in the MGL. That's what, and that's, Garrett Park, same thing, and so that's understanding different roles of different departments.
Okay, I'm gonna, if I can bring this to closure, if it's okay with you, Chairman, um, I will just reflect on what we have done quickly. And then, um, where we're going from here, and then I I think it's healthy to do this, I mean, I hope you've got something out of.
No, I think this is great, I really appreciate you bringing this forward.
So, um, what we, what we, what we settled on was the minutes will be briefer, we will define a delicate struck, a delegate. A delegation structure, we will, we will look into a government study committee, but we haven't established that, but we will look into it, bring it back for further discussion. We will, uh, use evaluation goal setting for all people that are employed in the, in the, in the. By the town, um, we will, um. We will develop a list of administrative duties, we said, and we will, um, keep on the, um. Keep on the, uh, on the, check a list of biweekly meetings, um, and, um. Our attention to acting as a board. Is that okay with everybody? Anybody hear anything there that they were diametrically opposed to? We're set, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is the Collins Report, Salary and Job Classification Study is.
And we have a representative, at least one, maybe two, from Collins. In the meeting right now, I think.
I am here. Yep, can you hear me? Excellent, excellent, it's just gonna be me tonight, Libby had a obligation with her children, oh.
I did print out to them what you sent, uh, the final copy this afternoon. I also printed out the copies of the three positions that were, uh, sort of in back and forth discussion.
Great, great, so, uh. How would you like to proceed, I could.
Let's start with an overview.
Okay, great. Why don't I, is there a way for me to share the screen? Okay.
Go to page one.
What would you like to put up on the screen, I may have.
You have to do it for me?
I don't know.
Unless you make her a co-host, she can.
We're gonna make you a co-host.
It's not a big deal.
Share a screen.
I can, but I can only share my screen, I have, I have to make her a co-host. I have done that. Alright, there you are.
You're on.
Sweet, alright, so I wanted to. Very quickly. Excellent, you can see the, my PowerPoint here? Alright, great, I just wanna go through these really quickly, that we start with the framework of what is a classification and compensation study. And then I'll go through the report and do a quick overview, and then just answer your questions, I don't wanna. I see you have a lot of people and a busy agenda, so, um, as you know, you were, uh, successful in getting a community compact grant. Which is always great, we love to do that, and, um. What we, what we wanted to say is, you know, what is a classification and compensation study? It's your current position descriptions, which, as you all know, were not in great shape, some of them were job postings, some of them were descriptions. Um, we take a look at your current compensation schedule, again, you have a decent setup, it it's not. Um, horrible, and then what we do is we look at the current classifications, groupings, and see where positions fall. Uh, we do a review of the positions, what grades people should be in, or which groupings people should be in. And then we do a market survey to evaluate the town's wages. Then what we do is we finalize with having accurate and compliant position descriptions and a a fair and equitable system. That's always the goal. The benefits of doing a study is you get accurate position descriptions, you also can use those in the future for. Personnel evaluations, it also addresses equity and classification in terms of comparable worth and pay equity. Under the Massachusetts Pay Equity Law, if you have predominantly female, uh, positions or male positions, are they being fair? And it really is an objective review to ensure fairness. Um, not that anybody in the town is unfair, but we all wear our lenses of of bias, or. We think we know what other people do, and until you apply a system that is objective, you're really, um. You know, a bit hamstrung. What we like to focus on also, and this is usually, this is an important part of the orientations that we do with employees and. A reclass, it's not a reclassification or an upgrade study. It's a job description study, so that's important to remember, this is not a way to upgrade or downgrade, it's to. To have it be the right system, it has nothing to do with how well an employee does his or her job. Or, you know, is that person a good employee or a bad employee, it really has to do with what are the functions required of a job. And it's not a staffing level, level study, we're not looking at how many hours a position should be, or do you need another person? This is measuring and evaluating the duties that, uh, the person is performing in the job. And certainly over time, these things can shift, so that's another factor. So the methodology we used, and most of this is in the report, so I'll skip over it again later when I come to it, we do an orientation, we were able to film. An orientation that was made available for people to, uh, view at their convenience, we, uh, distributed, uh. Position questionnaires, we afforded everybody an individual interview, my colleague Libby, who's not able to join us tonight. Did, uh, those interviews, we drafted position descriptions, we circulated those position descriptions for edits and comments. And we did finalized position descriptions, as you know from us, Libby and I visiting you in the past. We did have some trouble, um, getting the questionnaires filled out, the comments on the drafts, that was a big challenge. But it's also COVID, and you also have a use, um. Management organization, people have different supervisors, uh, so. Things were not as smooth as that as they could have been, but here we are, we even made some updates, and you'll see the report that I, uh, show you tonight. Has been updated from the draft that was distributed before, so anytime we get input, it's good, um. And, so that's how we did the position descriptions. Uh, the way we do the evaluation of the position, and you'll see in the report, we evaluate. Things like supervision received and exercise, is somebody a supervisor? Everybody has a supervisor, excepts, the only person who doesn't have a supervisor is an elected official. Even if you work for a board, you do have a supervisor, it is the board, sometimes the language that we use can be a little confusing. So I wanted to be clear on that, what does the job require for education and experience? It's not the education and experience the incumbent of the job has, and that's something that's really challenging for people to fill out. They wanna write about themselves, we ask them to fill out the questionnaire and look at the job description, as if they want a billion dollars, quit their job. And they're helping the town fill the job tomorrow, that's what we want the job description to reflect. What is the nature and purpose of their personal con contacts? I might be a receptionist at a corporate office building and see a thousand people a day, but I'm just directing them where they are. Some of your employees are in what we call the sole proprietor offices, they are representing that function to the municipalities. So we look at all of those things, after we evaluate this, we come up with what their grade is, or what their classification is. Um, so we do, we, um, it's a market survey, not a comparable town survey. We could find somebody with your exact demographics in terms of population, equalized value, all of those things. And if they're on Cape, but, we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna use them as a, as a survey municipality. So it really is the market, where do your employees come from, and where do you lose employees to? That's a really big indicator if your pay is equitable or not, in the market, are you losing people to other municipalities? So the way that we come up with a compensation schedule is, we analyze the survey data, we make sure that we use hourly wages. So particularly in your area of the state, there's many hard time positions, sometimes full times mean thirty-five hours. So you wouldn't wanna look at that salary versus forty versus thirty-two. We use that to determine what a minimum and maximum of a range should be, what does the market hold? And then we recommend a a salary schedule, so what we do is we coalesce all that data of, you've got this many grades. And this is what the market is showing. So, that's my quick overview of that, and then I'll go into the report, and you can stop me anytime if you want. So the final report. Is, so this was updated because we had made some changes. So this tells you, um, it's very self-explanatory, I won't read it to you, I promise, this goes over why we did it, that you got the grant. These were our goals, the methodology, the position descriptions, how we did them. And these are all the factors, the supervision required, accountability, complexity, those are the factors that go into creating. A a position description and a rating, and then we come up with the classification structure. I wanna focus a little bit on this because this was what we had the biggest challenge. And it often happens in smaller municipalities. Sometimes jobs morph into what they are based on who the incumbent is. Not necessarily what the function was when that job started, and that just makes sense. If you have somebody who's talented, you give them more work, the job somehow changes, so. We found quite a bit in that, and again, it's also. It's also reinforced by the fact that you have separate appointing authorities for some of these positions. By, you know, having people, boards, and people able to change job duties. That is not done in a wholesale way, that can be a challenge. The biggest challenge was this series, as I say here, you know, the administrative clerical, um. Now, department assistant sort of level, you have, even in your existing structure, you have people with the same title. Of administrative assistant in different grade levels, and in different pay levels. That is a false narrative, it's an oxymoron, you can't have, unless you designate them as. Well, you're an administrative assistant one, and you're an administrative assistant two. One, and you're an administrative assistant two, you really should not have the same title in two different grades. So we tried to. We tried to equalize this. And I'm thinking maybe I called up my wrong report because what we did, you'll see in the revised, we had talked about executive administrative department, board secretary. We got some very strong feedback that board secretary and the word secretary was not a desirable title. We have changed that. So, uh, so I think I've actually called up my last version of this. I apologize. So what we did was try to equalize the positions based on their level of responsibility and all of the factors above. The. I just missed taking up board secretary there. One of the things that we found is, and again, it's unique to the nature of the small town and using people for their talents. Your office, the the select board office is also the 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 Board of Health. And the way that you've had it structured is you've had one position for one function and one position for another. We are really recommending that you call that one department or division and really equalize those positions. You're using, um, I think over time duties have morphed and expanded to the talents of of the people in those jobs. So we are recommending that you change, um, the the Board of Health position to be one more broad. What under both the Department of the Town Administrator and the Board of Health, uh, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health to to incorporate some of those other operational functions. So we've made that recommendation. We are also, you you technically have two separate descriptions, one for the zoning board of appeals of support and one for the planning board support. It happens to be the same person. Quite frankly, you can charge the budget anywhere you want, but in most municipalities, that is one job description. So what we have provided is the recommendation that you combine that. We also took a second look at, um, some feedback we got, and we appreciate everybody's help on that. We did change our initial recommendation on the board secretary clerk issue for the zoning, the planning, and the conservation. In a closer review and a broader understanding, we are recommending a change from our draft to convert those titles to be conservation assistant and, uh, planning and zoning board assistant. It's equivalent to the administrative assistant, but we feel that those titles, um, better capture the nature of that sole proprietor office. And. Finally, we did receive some. Feedback on a job description wanting a title change from what we recommended from department assistant to administrative assistant. That, that request we did not put forward only because there were two different levels and you should not have administrative assistance in one level and another. So you can see here in the the table here, the different grades. Uh, it was very similar to what you have in place. You can see we've created, um, seven grades. You've got your, your quote, larger departments, and then your department heads are in grade six. Your middle sort of professional technical, um, staff, your paraprofessional technical staff in the grade five. And then you've got your administrative assistant, your conservation and planning assistant, and the assistant department heads in treasury, town clerk, accounting, and collector in the grade four level. And then you've got your department assistants, um, and your technical library people and your council on aging in the third level. And then your more, um, your your clerk function. And we came up with the title of his administrative clerk to show that they are, you know, every single position is critical to the organization. And then you have your entry level positions. The survey that we did, we got, we got very good feedback. We had, um, Brimfield, Holland, Longmeadow, Ludlow, Palmer, Southwood, Wilburham, and Munson. And I forgot to add Munson. We were able to add Munson, so I will correct this report. Um, and we were able to get that data and include it in the survey. Um, I already told you how we do that. Implementation is something that you all are gonna have to decide. How do you want to implement? Do you want it to be, we recommend that you take somebody's current pay and place them on the pay scale that would cause them an increase. You may want to make a policy decision. You say, we're gonna roll in our across the board for next fiscal year and then place them on the scale so that you're guaranteeing everybody a minimum. Uh, because depending on where you fall on the scale, it could be less or more of an increase. We were also asked to do a fire department, uh, review. So we are recommending these rates. And that is it. I went very quickly, only so that we could, uh, I could answer questions because I know you're, um, busy with time. So you can see here, when you see red, that means that particular position is under the average uh, and the median of the, of the, uh, survey municipalities.
Question right there. So.
Anything.
Under the Hampton maximum range, you have, that's what the current position pays.
Yes.
Right, okay. Under the survey average minimum, is that all the towns or is that the lowest towns?
No, that is the average of the minimums of all that responded. So I don't have on another spreadsheet, um, that I have provide, it just won't fit. It's easy to look at. It lists all the towns.
Yeah, I have that.
Yeah, so that's the average of the responding. And if.
So if, so if, so if, if, uh, Munson and Holland, uh, two that responded, one was thirty-five dollars, the other was thirty-seven dollars, those two would be the thirty-six sixty-three?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So that's the.
And the median would be uh, the middle number of all the, all the pays?
You are correct.
Okay. So on that particular line, the top line there, where it says Hampton's survey average minimum, the nu- number one, just use that example, that'd be four ninety-nine above the average.
Yep.
Minimum. And, and the median was just eighty-eight cents over.
Exactly. You're exactly right. And when you see numbers that are different, widely different in the survey average, the median, that means there's an outlier someplace. If you go to the building inspector.
Yeah.
You can see they're almost the same amount. That shows you that they're pretty much all paid the same. Same library director, thirty-two thirty-two. Um, but when you see something like an outlier, that means one of the survey municipalities had a much higher pay. Maybe it was a fuller DPW department. I could get that answer. It's not going to be on this screen. Um, but when you see the median and the average close, you know that it's it, it's accurate.
Right, true, okay.
Now, town accountant, this is the thing because some towns use a vendor for a town accountant. So we tried to re- remove those. But in terms of, um, and because you only have one pay, it really is your minimum and your maximum. So it can be a little deceiving. So then when you move down to, um, the maximum, I've got the minimums here. Hold on, minimum, minimum. Yeah.
There you go.
So here we go. So when you go to the maximum, um, you've got this grouping here, your department heads, you can see here. They're under. You know, when you see it consistently, um, you have to realize, if, I know that you do, uh, three dollars an hour. If you work forty hours, you know, that's six thousand dollars difference in a year if it's, if it's a full-time job. If you see something within a dollar or so, you know you're okay. Uh, so is these positions here are, um, are low. Now, your library director is low. You also have, but again, you can see your average and your maximum are pretty close within a dollar. Um, twenty-seven dollars an hour is is lower than than the market. Some positions you might find, um, are recreation is one that's often very different across municipalities. Some municipalities have small programs and really what they call the recreation director is a recreation coordinator, not a full-time director. So we have to do some of that. That's why we say the salary recommendations in the plan is an art, not a science, because it's not absolute. And let me see if I pick out another one. Animal control officer. I see. I didn't have data because the way that, is that position vacant or do you pay it differently in a stipend? We'll have to figure that one out. So this is how we did it. Um, now, when you see no data, that means the other towns didn't have, uh, the positions. Unless we had three data points, we did not do an average or a median. So using all of that, we came up with a recommended, uh, classification scale. So we came up with seven grades, as you saw, and we are recommending, um, a a twelve-step program, not to be confused with a ten-step program. And what that does is over time bringing people in and, um, having, having some growth opportunity because your salaries, the the way that you do it now, you have a long-term employee and they're making a certain rate. And it can be tricky when you hire somebody new and almost at the rate that the person was making before. So we do recommend you come up with a pay scale. This is a, you may want to go to strictly ranges and not have steps. That's again a policy decision. This is just one example of what you can do with the recommendations in terms of how do you want to approach classification. So that is. I'm gonna stop sharing that and ask you if you have, I went quickly. Um, do you have any questions? Do you want to digest this and ask questions another time?
Go, go back, go back to the recommended compensation schedule.
Sure.
Okay. So let's say I'm currently making, I'm, I'm on, I'm currently making, I'll do step one, right? Twenty-two dollars and six cents an hour, but I should, it's step four. Twenty-two oh six an hour, but the market says I should be making twenty-three eighty-eight an hour. Do you recommend we put that person at twenty-three eighty-eight?
No, so if, hey, we say your job should be a grade four.
Right.
He say you should be paid between twenty-two oh six and twenty-seven forty, whatever that number was. I just thought.
Right.
If you currently make eighteen dollars an hour, we say make twenty-two oh six. If you currently make twenty-two sixty an hour, we say you should go to twenty-two ninety-five. From, you know, because you fall, go to the step that causes you an.
Right. If if we want to give that person a raise, so that would put them in the the range.
Right. It really isn't. I wouldn't say, do you want to give that person a raise? I would say where they fall on the scale is that. Now, what municipalities do when they implement this is they say, well, come July, we're gonna make sure everybody gets a two percent raise. So, and if I made twenty-two six right now, you would multiply that by two percent, then use that adjusted number to put me on the scale. It still might be twenty-five or it might spill to twenty-three forty-one.
And Mary, that's what we did before. We did the, we did the up, so they gave them the raise. Then we moved them up, bumped them up to the next number that was in the chart.
Yeah. Yeah.
The other thing though.
And then, then excuse me, John. And then the next year, they would go to step five.
If that is the policy you adopt, yes.
Right, okay.
So what happens after step twelve? I mean, we have a thing now where we have fifteen steps. And then they get a two and a half and just keeping track of, okay, you're at step fifteen plus six, plus seven. Do you have, what typically are other municipalities doing when they hit the top of the the steps?
So when they hit the top of the step, most towns start longevity program. Because at that point, it's about the years of service, not what the market is paying. Because every few years, what you would do, so if I'm at, you know, step five of grade four and twenty-three eighty-eight, you don't necessarily have to apply a COLA this, you know, the second year. But in three years, you might increase the whole scale by two percent. So it does go up over time. But at some point, if you keep giving the COLAs, it, you know, most would be, and again, we use the word COLA. It's not always a COLA. It's really across the board.
So your point is that we do a scale adjustment without a step some years, just to make, just to.
Exactly.
Keep the flexibility of the additional steps down the road.
Exactly, exactly.
Um, another question is, well, we have a kind of a history here is taking into account experience, et cetera. So you're hiring somebody for one of the jobs that's a grade four. But they don't start at step one because they have twelve years of experience in that job, and that's a personnel decision, if you will. And that's fairly common?
Very common. So really, that comes down to what your policy would be. Some municipalities have a policy that, you know, and you know, no more than midpoint, and that needs to be approved by the board, that kind of thing. That's really your of, you know, and it's hard to get good people, but this does reflect and has shifted, you know, your, your pay rates, uh, a bit. Um, you do have, if you look here, when you see, when you don't see red, um, that shows you that that person is above what is the average and the median.
Of the survey.
Hey, we do not use.
Yeah.
Right, of the survey community. We don't want anybody to think we're saying these people are overpaid or above the market. You know, it's really not meant to see who's underpaid or we're looking at the positions. But you do have a few positions that are higher than what the survey range is. But often that has to do with what is the real functioning of that person versus in another municipality. The term administrative assistant can mean anything across, sometimes that's the, you know, the town administrator, you know, sometimes that's the, um, receptionist. Um, so, and again, something like council on aging, it depends on the scale and the scope of of the department. So you have to look at that. So we coalesce all of that. So what we did, for example, with these department head positions, we don't just look at, oh, this one's under, this one's over. If I can highlight, you can see here, what we do is we look at all these salaries in here to come up with the recommended range for each of them. So you, if you look at these numbers, they range from twenty-seven to the highest is thirty-nine. So when you look at what amended, we did thirty-one to thirty-nine. So you'll see that we went with the, the market because the twenty-seven was the lowest one of those. But we didn't more than what the market was. So your people in that group will fall in that range. Even though they've got the red negative letters there, that doesn't mean they're getting a five dollar an hour range. It's just reflective of where they are. So. Of where they are. So you can see most of them fall within the range. So we said it was going to be thirty-one to thirty-nine. This is where your people are right now. You've got one, your library director is low. The others all fit with that range. So that's how we do it. We don't go by. An absolute number. This is where you're comparing it to the other grades. We're looking at it. So all of these people, you've only got one that was quote, under the market. And you have none that were over the market. So that's a good thing. So we're just showing, even though we found that there was some um. You know, some room for improvement, we able to to build that into the recommended scale.
Though the differential between the different grades I noticed is pretty consistent up until six and seven. Now, it only goes up ten percent to seven. Is that because there are so few data points to work with up in grade seven?
No, so you excellent point, and I can tell you're a brother of my spreadsheet, so I'm so happy to hear that, to see you that. Um, so what you want to do is you want to look at these, the groupings here. These start out as entry level. And they work their way up to um clerical administrative, paraprofessional. This jump from five, six, that's paraprofessional to department head. That's not going to be same increment in quote value. So that's why you percentage. And sometimes you see. You would tell me right now because I don't have it in front of me that there's not the same jump from six to seven. Because while they're department heads, they're not, you know. They deserve a differential because scope and authority of their jobs, but they're. A twenty percent jump like in some of the other places. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
If you want to come work for the center and do these spreadsheets for me, I would love it.
Mary?
Yes.
For the benefit of those who are listening, can you read out the towns that you surveyed?
Oh, sure, sure. So the towns that were used. And this I do need to correct because we got months in late. Um, we used. Where am I? Position descriptions? I'm sorry. I'm not really good at, you know, this Zoom thing. Sorry. There we are. Okay. Grimfield, Holland, Munson, Long Meadow, Ludlow, Palmer, Southwick, Wilberham. And we did request information. I think we had one or two that just did not respond. We fortunate, we were fortunate a week or so ago to get the data from the new interim town administrator in Munson. So she was able to provide us that information. Now, Munson's salaries did not really change the the ranges at all, but it's good. Reenact that we were in the ballpark with what we did.
So you initially looked for eleven, but you got eight back.
I can.
Remember where there was talk about.
Yeah, that sounds right to me. Right. That sounds right to me, but I would have to double check.
Eleven originally, right?
Yeah, it, you know, as we say in our scopes of work, the um. The. The getting back the survey, particularly, they've got part-time people, but we have good data points. I I'm I'm pleased with the data that we were able to obtain.
What would your recommendation for us to be for our next step?
What I would. What what we would recommend is that you um. You know, adopt the recommendation of the classification structure. So that would be one thing. That would be the grades. And that's almost separate from the pay. You know, so when we look at it and we feel, and we were able to make some adjustments. Um, after the draft was done. So we recommend that you adopt the classification structure. Whether that needs to go to your town meeting or not, I would rely upon Bob. I don't know whether that's a board issue or a town meeting issue. I know the pay has to be funded, but I don't know the approving authority of the structure itself. Bob's my resident expert on that. Then what you need to do is decide, do you adopt the pay scale? And you can do it all in one, or you might say, yes, we're going to adopt the pay scale. Great, I think you should. Really, the the metal hits the road when you want to say, how do we want to implement? You know, do we wait for the fiscal year, roll it in there? Do we um? None of your people are way under the market, so I don't think you've got. Uh, an equity issue. I think you've got a structural issue that needs to be um fixed. Um, I think that um, so it's not going to, implementing this is not going to cost the town a lot of money. You'll see that. People are within those ranges. And when you see that, that means your pay is okay. I think the way people move through and what grades they're at can be, um, we recommended adjustments to that. Uh, so it won't be cost prohibitive. It just becomes a nuance. If you don't guarantee everybody there, you know, across the board for July, one, January, whenever it is, and then implement. Some people might get more than others. So if you only implemented it. Somebody who misses a step by one penny gets almost two percent in implementation. So you have to look at that. You'd want to run the numbers. I think we provided a spreadsheet um. On that, but that's just a working document. That's not our recommendation. So that's not part of this report. So what I do is have your treasurer and town administrator take a look at what would the implementation cost be? And what that is may drive your policy decision on how you want to approach it. So you might want to run a scenario of, well, what if we guaranteed everybody one percent and then implemented? What if we did two? What if we gave people who were here at max more than ten years an extra step for longevity? So we are what your pay people is really the policy decisions. But if you were to, uh, you know. Adopt and recommend, I'm sure it's part of your budget process that you would be doing that.
I think what happened before, going back. We had a Tabor study done. You may be familiar with the firm.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and and so they, then we're talking twenty years ago.
I remember, yeah.
Okay, and so since that time, then we went to, the problem with them is they gave us a seven-step range. And the differential between the steps was in the three to four percent.
Oh, very.
You're given that step every year, you're pretty much pricing it. So that's why the board implemented a fifteen-step approach with a much more. Two, a little over two percent step.
Right.
Much more in common with, you know, your funding at that point. Then advisory had a role, maybe every. Three or four years, let's adjust the COLA that is, let's shift the scale. So no step this year. But so to give you, so speak, the range like you talked about, down the road to keep adding steps. None of that had to go to town meeting. That was just implementation, basically management. The only thing went town meeting was way back when, when we appropriated money for hiring Tabor. And Ron Mallett, maybe something like that? Ron Mallett, I think it was, something like that. Yeah, yeah. So anyhow, so that was the history with that and just saying, so I think you're right. It's a management decision, working with advisory. You know, as to a financial impact. And also, as this board has been strong on, doing the right thing for the people that, you know, work hard for their town.
Can you, could you go back to the library director?
Sure.
I just.
Let me see. At the report. Your board. Here we go. The salary of the library director?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, we're right there. Okay. And so explain that to me. So it's twenty-seven fourteen, the thirty-two ninety-two is the minimum average of the towns.
Mm-hmm.
Though, but that's not in the range, right? I mean, the the minimum, the the minimum and median are in the range, but.
And then when you go to the maximum, which is on another screen.
Yeah.
So you go to the library, the maximum is thirty thirty-nine.
Yeah, that's within the range too, right? Except the twenty-seven.
We make, right, right. It is, we ended the range at the thirty-nine.
Yeah.
Knowing, of course, nobody's there now. And if they move to that over the next few years, if you give or don't give COLAs, you're just going to keep up with that market. You know, seeing anybody at at step twelve here. So um. That's when you're looking at the finances each year, what makes the same same sense. Now, what we do recommend is in four years or so, you do a quick survey to see, are you still in that range? Um. But that's, that one is one of the ones that's that's low. Um, you know, and again, you all make your decisions. I don't know whether you have a library director who does not have a degree. It's, you can't. I'm not here to. To say, I I'm showing what the 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 market is. What you pay. Um. You know, and you have some really val, you know, there's different people pay different amounts. And sometimes libraries, which have been historically either part-time. Historically not viewed as, um, I will tell you, many of our studies, library and council on aging. Typically are the ones who are under the market. Now ironically, your council on aging is is not one that's under the market. Um, but, you know, typically those departments that have historically been female as well. Are often under the market, which is why when you see pay equity studies, they're the ones to get adjusted. Now, I don't know, and again, Libby's not here tonight, so I I can't speak with the library director. I don't know whether she's a new. Uh, I think it's a woman, am I right? I kept saying she. Okay, um. Is she new? I don't know that. Maybe that's the stuff, you know, so. Those have to come into play too, and that's why this becomes a framework rather than the policy decision.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much. We we have our work cut out for us.
You do, but please, um, you know, we're a phone call away, a Zoom meeting away, and um. You know, as you digest it and kind of work out some of the numbers, please, please, please don't hesitate to be in touch.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, take care and I'll be well, everybody.
Well. Other comments while we're on it?
Suggest that Bob come back with some uh impact, financial impact. Based on her recommendations and we can take it in a review.
Treasurer has done preliminary.
Okay.
But I haven't sat with him yet to go through to see what assumptions are involved.
I did see his email. I might disagree slightly because if those people are, if someone's on vacation, they're supposed to have the responsibility. I think they should be.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sure there's some happy media, so.
All right, capital planning committee, avoidance and mission.
Yeah, I'd sent you um. The mission is very standard, and I'm recommending some appointments. And the reason for this is that. This committee was sort of in between. Uh, an obvious public body. And. One of these private advisory boards that the administrators and even selectmen can put into existence. Uh, there was some discussion about this and controversy. So I had just said to the members of the committee. I will ask the board to make formal appointments and um and also to adopt a mission. So I'd sent that out to you in the packet. I'm recommending Donna Hatch, Mara Ryan. I mean, basically, I just flipped the coin on all these to um. Other words, one, two, and three-year appointment. So we have, we have staggered appointments. And I just picked at random.
And I think I think what Bob was saying, that everybody who's on the committee is being endorsed for staying on the committee. He's assigning terms.
Yes.
Right. Um, if I couldn't, I think I made the point last week, the town meeting spoke to the mission of the capital planning and voted it in at a town meeting. And I don't, that was oh four, I believe. Remember, Austin referred to that when he stood up at the town meeting with some proposed changes. So I'm not quite sure. If this board can just change action at a town meeting without going back to a town. I think a little research for that should be done.
I don't recall the capital planning committee being at a town meeting, but that doesn't mean that didn't happen. I mean, I.
Don't recall it.
It's in the town report and.
Yeah, that's what we have to look, look um to see. And 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 did it get, it gave the mission of this group or?
You don't recall me. You don't recall then Austin standing up at the church with this request for changes of three years ago down, maybe four? And then we took a pass on it because it was a little confusing what he was doing.
Oh, I remember him standing up and being confusing.
Either way, so I think oh four, oh five, you you pulled it out. Right, so. I'd like Bob to do a little research on that. Again, if we're looking to revise an action of a town meeting, how that can be done. But I'm certainly, I certainly endorse his slated candidates would be. And then we're into, Bob, the other thing was posting Zoom, and that was kind of, that was where the question really came from. If we're going to be having these meetings at four o'clock, are we really an ad hoc committees? Are we going to be a formal committee like? I mean, you go back to the ambulance committee, they don't go online. They don't share their meetings with anybody. So is this different than that kind of committee? I mean, I'm not sure the solar committee, do they go online, shared to stormwater committee? Are those ad hoc or are those?
So so rather than get bogged down with process, I just agreed with everybody. Uh, I will post every meeting as we normally would post.
Hmm.
Uh, we will have our meetings at six uh PM.
Hmm.
I will also have a Zoom code for people who would like to join the meeting or not members of the committee. So.
Well, that can't hurt because the more transparency you have, the better. So I mean, they let everybody can come to all your meetings, actually, if.
That doesn't answer the question. Right, which is, are we saying that's true of the solar committee, the stormwater committee, the ambulance committee? You know, all these other.
Well, the solar committee posts all the meetings that have been.
Oh, no, and that's kind of done because it's.
Yeah, it wasn't Zoom, it wasn't Zoom.
Yeah, anybody could have walked into the town hall, attended, poured out of their mind. But uh, you know, are we doing this going forward for ambulance committee, for the stormwater committee, for? You know, what is the difference between a town committee and an ad hoc committee that's doing a charge, if you will?
If.
ADA committee, if you will.
If it is under the control. Of the person creating the committee. If a decision on the subject matters, if I could decide what the capital plan is, then I could create an advisory group. That would not be a public body. But since what we do there with the capital planning committee has to ultimately come to the board of selectmen.
Right.
Then it qualifies as a public body.
Same as the other committees and they should.
Other committees too.
Yeah.
It's only when you have authority to make the decision.
Hmm.
That you can create an advisory group that doesn't have to be considered a public body. In this case, I don't think we have a choice either. And by the way, the clerk and I went back and forth on this. Originally, she thought, no. Then, you know, an hour or so later, we came back and discussed it again, and we agreed that it is and should be considered a public body.
And did you have any thought about the other committees?
I think, yeah, the logic is pretty clear that the ambulance oversight committee has to be formalized. Actually, it has been formalized, but we have to, we have to use formal procedures.
Well, does it make sense that we, that you write up the policy for committees and bring that to the next meeting so that we all are clear? On and and what what is covered under it? On, and, and what, what is covered under it? All these committees and so forth and so on, and then we would have to notify those committees, I guess.
I'll do that. I mean. Frankly, it's written in the open meeting law, and I'll just bring.
Right.
Yeah, I'll bring that in.
Where are you gonna do that? They're gonna do formalize their meetings.
And how about appointments?
I move to recommend the appointments per, uh, but they don't fall in line with the bylaw. But I move to endorse the, uh, the citizens that have been appointed to the, uh, capital planning committee. As suggested by the town administrator.
And why are we doing that when we already did that?
They've all been appointed.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's looking to actually put years on them, which is fine too. Uh, I go back, let's do this. This is almost a little more work than we really need. The next committee meeting, Bobby, Bob made an agenda thing. Let's choose a chair. Great. Let that chair then come up with suggested terms and bring it back to our board. Hey, Bob says he'll be two thousand twenty-one. Jane says she'd be happy to be twenty-two and be done with it. Cause we are really spending a lot of time on something that is. They're working pretty hard. I have to say, Bob is really, we have to really throw them out of the room by the time the Zoom thing finishes.
So if it's a bylaw.
Pass the time, I'm trying to look at a.
Will be a general bylaw?
I don't think it's a bylaw, because I went through the bylaws, looking for planning committee. I didn't see it.
I looked through the full.
So we have to do more research.
So you made a motion to appoint, to point the people that are there.
Well, Marion's quite correct. All these people have been appointed by action of the, or selectmen. Bob's trying to say, hey, you know, can we put some years on them? Come back with some years, we'll sign new appointments, let's be done with it. Don, you wanted to be out here before ten, didn't you?
All right, uh, in a report update, we have anything on that?
I do not. Um, Pam has been overseeing that.
I reached out to one of the people helping Pam and, uh, they haven't met in a couple of weeks, so.
Okay, do we need to, do we need to, to use our, uh, temporary help, help temporary help, uh, budget money and have someone come in here and do the damn thing?
I think if, uh, we gave a little more charge, the two people that are helping are pretty capable. I think if we, you know, said, look, why don't you guys just take it over and finish this bad boy?
Because, you know, the town meeting's forty-five days away.
Looking forward to it. Okay, let's, uh, Bob, uh, reach out those two people and say if they want to take the horse and go.
All right. Highway, so let's go, so let's go to the budget town meeting discussion. So, I put this on because I have no idea where we are in the budget. Let's see if we can figure something out. So highway garage expansion, what do you think? We're going with that.
Sure, you mean warrant or, or the budget, not the budget budget.
The budget budget too.
Well, the budget budget means the, it's just the advisory committee has a, uh, what they run there.
Yeah, I know, but here's, here's the problem. Uh, on, on February nine, on February nineteenth, the stormwater people sent the budget over here. And it never got to the advisory committee. Forty thousand eight hundred and fifty bucks. It's seven thousand dollars last year, last year, which is great. So we gotta send that over to them. I, I emailed it to them today. All right.
What's the reason for the drop, stuff we've accomplished?
Yeah, they're, 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 they don't need as much. So that, okay. And the other concern I began having was is we don't have the salary figures in there. So now we got that, we can work on that. We don't have, uh, you know, I looked at, I went through our selectmen's budget. Uh, as an example, we have seventeen thousand dollars in there for postage. All right, two years ago, we spent two thousand dollars. Two years, a year before that, we spent two thousand dollars. Well, that's what Cliff's, that's what Cliff's thinks of. So far this year, we spent nine hundred and eleven dollars. So is seventeen thousand dollars appropriate or can we lower that? I don't know.
Are you looking at the end of year ones?
Yeah, really.
Yeah.
Um, I think, uh. Well, last year, the, the, the end of the year and the last figure that he had there was two thousand ninety-five dollars. Which was, uh, the other thing we have to do, it was, let's see, every twin boss with, uh, the western line, I don't, I don't know, it's, it's, uh, postage zero, one, one, five, nine, five, four, two, oh, oh, four, was two thousand twenty-nine dollars. FY twenty, we spent nine hundred and eleven so far this year.
No, doesn't much need to mail stuff out, but that's even low, considering how many tax bills. I don't find that, that.
Yeah.
It's, it's odd concerning, the tax bills keep coming out and they're not going up for free.
That's what I thought too. Okay, on the transfer station, we did, we had, uh, we put twenty-five thousand in and then, uh, that's been going down because, you know, I guess things are working good there. And last year, twenty, FY twenty, we spent six thousand four forty-three.
Yeah, we talked.
Excuse me, we spent twelve thousand eight eighty-six.
Yeah, we have the contract with Fabri on that.
Right.
So we did talk about, and his warning has always been, look, it only takes the D E P to say, I want you to test for.
All right, and then we have, then we have, we have the outstanding thing with the school legal. I don't know if we, we only got twenty-one thousand dollars left in that, so I don't know, we need to do something there. And then I have a question about the. Board this weekend.
Three in the morning or what?
School legal. Oh, we, we, we have to put it the, somewhere we have to put in a twenty-four thousand dollars for the tower. I don't know where to put that in.
Well, firstly, what do you think about putting it in the, in the public safety area?
So do we divide that between fire and police or you just put it on the police or?
There's a general protection thing, and I think it's just like, and I think it's just.
All right. So highway garage, highway garage expansion, where are we in that one?
We're gonna another meeting coming up with, uh, Larry, as we kicked around the other day about prepaying some of the expensive stuff. That is, I don't know if you're aware of it, steel has been going up like crazy, wood's gonna be doing the same thing. He just informed us that they're pretty sure there's gonna be another pretty good bump in steel. We have, what we feel enough money appropriated to go ahead and pre-purchase that. You know, and have it sit and wait for the rest of the money. The danger there, what if the town doesn't decide to put on the index? Think we were enjoying against that actually, but. So we don't really have a, a danger because it's gonna have a value that we, we're not gonna be stuck with.
Then we have an additional amount that we have to, uh, put into a word article.
No, that's what we're talking about. If we do that, that might mitigate some of the increase that we're talking about here. I think Bob's gonna have a tighter number after we meet with Larry.
And the tower we talked about, the, the dispatch funding, how are we gonna handle that in the budget?
I've done it right.
It's in the budget. And, uh, assuming, uh, the promises made by the Commonwealth and, and the arrangements with the Wilbraham workout for us. Uh, we can delete those funds or dispatch in the fall, and so they will not go into the tax rate.
Okay, what about the issue of the separate line item for the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars fee?
That line item, it doesn't have to exist because it goes directly, that, that amount is being paid directly to the town of Wilberham. By the state nine eleven. Not even passed through, passed, uh, passing through us. The same with the, the cost of the fiber optic line that goes directly to the town of Wilberham.
All right, uh, and then we, and then the coverage for the police station, we have to decide if we're gonna.
I brought this along, uh, to refresh your memory if you. That was the survey that was done. That was the survey that was done.
So I, I guess I'm asking, is that, if, if we have the money in, in the line item for salaries, we'll just leave that there. And then when we decide and we get the money from the state, then we'll just say, okay, it's not being reduced by two hundred and fifty thousand, being reduced by a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
And by the time of the fall, there'll be some experience as well.
All right.
With the use of the building.
Academy Hall painting?
Uh, I was supposed to get a second estimate today. Uh, I told the individual, uh, to go over and look at the building and then come over and bring me his estimate. Uh, that person didn't show. We are going to have at least one more estimate. The one estimate that I have right now is for twenty-three thousand five hundred.
And I spoke to the historical society, uh, their membership has guaranteed ten thousand towards the cost. One other concern, which is something they've been saying for years. Uh, one other concern I might have, and I think Bob and I talked about this, is we haven't really done a good structure assessment. So set up a, uh, walkthrough with Toby to take a look and make sure that, uh, you know, while you're doing this, why don't you go ahead and maybe show up that beam, or maybe this needs to be looked at at the same time? If you're going to do something, let's do it all at once.
So the, the academy hall, uh, that'll be a warrant article.
Yes. Um, I would say, and this is just, you can structure it the way you want. You could appropriate the entire money, wait for income to come back in. That might, Cliff, I'm sure can make that work out, so really it's only a net of whatever. Or you could appropriate money, uh, subject to, uh, a gift, if you will. That would get the, I'm sure Cliff could.
Health nurse, so my question there is, it's ten thousand, do we wanna do that if we keep getting COVID money or?
No.
It's only, it's only if COVID money drives up in December.
I have, I have a report for you on that.
Oh, good.
Today, we had our second session with the P V P C coordinator. Towns of, uh, Munson, Wilbraham, Long Meadow, uh, Hamden. No final decisions were made, but we are putting in an application, deadline April first, for three hundred thousand dollars. There's a grant program available, uh, that would provide the money to facilitate what we're trying to do, not only for a health agent, but also, uh, public health nurse as well. Uh, for the, for the area. Just how that works out hasn't been decided. But they're asking for, as part of the application, a vote of the board of selectmen in the various towns, approving of the application. So maybe you disapprove of applying for three hundred thousand dollars, but, uh, if you do, uh, approve, uh, a vote would, would be useful. This thing has to go in, uh, before April first.
I'm, I'm all good with the grants, but you know, the good thing, the thing about the grant. You know, here's the candy and then after a sudden you're left with next year's bill because the grant's not there again.
Well, I, what'll happen is eventually the town will need to cover the cost of a health agent, which you're currently doing. And also if you want to continue with a public health.
Well, I agree. I think it's a good thing, just like we're aware, oh, it's a grant. Well, it probably won't be next year. So it's how they do it.
Yeah, but if you go for three hundred thousand dollars for, for the, those two positions, okay? And it's for Munson, Wilberham, Long Manton, Hamden, okay? And then the money is no longer there. Are we not, are we not still committed to being in that partnership and whatever fee would come with that?
No, we're committed to having a facilitator put together a regional partnership. We're not making any commitment.
So if they, if she comes forward and says, this is what the grant is, the grant is for three hundred thousand dollars, we can say, no, we don't want to do it anymore? Or, excuse me, but when the money's dry up, we don't wanna have that.
We're not obliged to have a regional arrangement. We're obliged only to use those funds to plan and try and coordinate a regional arrangement. I said.
This isn't for paying, this isn't for paying a health agent or a nurse.
Wasn't that a lot of money to do a study?
It is. That's what I said. I said, you know, we could buy, you could hire a health agent and buy that person the condo on the water.
Exactly. I think that's a lot of money.
Uh, it is, but we don't have, the answer to that was from Eric Weiss at P V P. We don't have to spend it. They're making these grants available across the state. I think there are only ten grants that are gonna be funded. So it's gonna be competitive. And I don't know what our chances are, but, uh, he did say that, uh, they will, there will be some consideration for regional balance. So I think the towns in Western Mass, we are maybe having advantage in that, uh, we would provide regional balance. We're not aware of any other communities in, uh, Hamden, Hampshire, Franklin, or Berkshire that are applying at this point, so.
I don't know why you apply for a grant, just because the grant is there, number one. Number two, I don't know why you apply for a grant when we can get our own. We're gonna spend three hundred thousand dollars to tell us that we need a health agent, which we know, that we need a nurse, which we know. And if, if they're, if, if, I'm sure that their cost would be a lot more, they would project that the nurse would cost this and the health agent, or whatever they would project. And, and we know what we're doing it for now, which is peanuts.
And we're already funded with, uh, frankly, the D L T A grant.
Yeah.
Is funding P V P C and their assistance in this project. It always turn it down. We don't have to spend it.
Yeah, if we do this, do we have to like come up with an I M A to govern the whole thing and our responsibilities with hopefully a backup thing? Look, like you said, apply for it. We can always, you know, not take it if it comes through, let the process start at least. Authorize the town administrator to participate with the other towns and applying for a planning grant.
What I would do would be simply to report this to P V P C if you vote for it. And they would simply include that with the grant proposal.
Right.
Well, I don't think you apply for money that you didn't want and that you don't need to do a plan with four communities that you probably wouldn't enter. I mean, that doesn't, I mean, we have trouble with one partner, never. Four partners, I don't know. I mean, I could be, you know, you could always, like I used to say, you can always turn it down, but I don't know why you apply for something you don't want. I mean, I think it's the same with, the same position that I have with all the COVID money and everything. I mean, we just, at some point, you have to draw a line and say, excuse me, but we don't need that. And if, if you guys need it, then please give it to somebody who needs it, but we don't really need it. But I don't know, what do you think, Donald? Say something.
But I think we're, we're, we're handling the existing COVID money in an appropriate way. We're not going out and just trying to find places to spend the money. We're spending it on needs.
No, but there are a lot of.
I, I don't, yeah, I just don't know why it's so much.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. Three hundred thousand dollars is like.
Your four guys should get a health nurse and, and.
Don't we already know that?
And we advertise it.
Like I say, I don't see, there's, there's a, a bit of a moral thing, and I see where you're going with that. But there is no impact, no negative impact to the town, not the information we can use.
I would say we have a track record of not spending the money irresponsibly when it, when we get grant money.
We're not spending it.
I think we'll carry.
But we're not spending this money. We're just signing on to get the money. We're not spending the money. The money's not coming to us.
No, but P V B C is not a, a wastrel type place either. They're pretty good.
Explain to me again what they're gonna do with it.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, I did get a copy late today of the PowerPoint. If you would prefer to look at the PowerPoint that was presented today, I can convey, I was gonna convey it to you anyway. Uh, take a look at it and make a decision next week.
Okay.
It has to be in April first, so we still have.
We still got it. We got a week. They put the taxes off for the seventeen. It's perfect.
Exactly.
May seventeen, okay, we're gonna do it next week, so.
I nailed them in. You're kidding.
Then I got this fire department proposal for a new vehicle. Does he want a warrant article for that? Is that something?
I don't know that they've determined how to fund it. They, they want a new tank.
No, did that? This is a smaller thing. This is a. This, this is, this is this, uh, he wants to do medic one needs repairs.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Turn transmissions leaking, gotta completely rebuild, breaks down, not enough space, uh, we have, so what they wanna trade in tool and get one?
That's what I thought, yeah.
That's fifty-six thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars.
That's a trade-in?
And realizing your vision, successful project, the budgetary requirements are a vehicle fifty-four thousand, bed slide and hitch one thousand nine thirteen fifty-six four ninety-four. The budget of, you know, cost of materials, right, and then you got.
Capital Committee is meeting again tomorrow.
That's what I was just gonna say.
And, uh, that's a capital item.
Yeah.
And, uh, if you would prefer, we'll spend some time on that.
Does it fight COVID?
Our goal for this project is to consolidate our current two thousand thirteen Ford Explorer and our nineteen eighty-six Dodge pickup truck into a modern multi-use all hazard response vehicle for FY twenty-two. This vehicle would meet all current safety stated in Mass Department of Transportation regulations.
Probably a little better responding like that Minutelog thing. It sounds like a little more, you know, in the, like what we're seeing now and getting out of brush areas.
Yeah, the Dodge lacks modern safety features like airbags are, and are unable to bring Dodge a safe acceptable standard. Initial repairs are needed, air intake is falling off, major rusting present, tailgate broken, exhaust pipe needs replacing, new headlight switch. I might buy this for my wife as a second pair. New wiper motor needed, power steering leak needs fixing, shocks, door handle.
Perfect for her.
Doors, door seal.
There are no airbags.
Door seals, reverse lights, brakes, and tires. Other than that.
It's in good shape.
More color, make sure it's right, Doc.
That's also in line with the self-defined mission of the department, becoming an all-hazard department.
Exactly.
That's, that's what was expressed.
Yeah, well, and look where the situations are.
All right, so you're gonna bring this to Capitol Planning?
Do it tomorrow.
Okay.
And, and, and they will look at this in light of, of the other capital projects that are going on. Is that the idea? Not just, is this necessary?
We have this list now.
Yeah.
By department, and we're refining it. And, uh, we'll have it ready.
Ma- Main Street, no answer back on that? Okay.
What's the Main Street? Tell me, Main Street what?
Main Street what, or no answer back from Titan Box.
Is it supposed to be coming back though this week or shortly?
By the end of the month, I thought.
Okay, I have another, uh, item, uh, relative to the budget that you would request it, and that is how I asked Entree what they project as the, the, the technique, uh, technological needs of the town in the next fiscal year. They gave me a list, but no prices. So Jane called them today, and they sent this over, roughly thirty-two hundred dollars.
Are we tied to this company? I mean, do we have a contract with them for a certain period of time or no?
That's all thirty-two hundred bucks?
Is, is the, is the, is that, um, service bid, bid for, or that we just, we, how do we happen to have them?
I don't know. They were here, they were.
Long before your time.
No, we had, we had, uh, tech people here and other people felt we should go to a company, but two people, two companies come in, they met with, I think, Pam and Mary. They chose Entree, who'd been in business in West Springfield for a very long time. And, uh, they provided, they started an upgrade program. Obviously, as you know, the Windows seven, Windows ten thing was affecting us quite a bit. Uh, migrated all, everything over to ten. This, and then we have, they did quite a bit of work with the town, getting a new domain, uh, new office.
Laptop, setting up laptops.
I mean, and then the software part.
And are we pleased with their service? Do we think they give us good service? Do they?
They are very busy.
I guess my, my impression.
They give us good service when they come here. Sometimes we have to fight to get them to come here because they have a lot of work to do, I guess. And, but it's, it's okay. I mean, I think the way we do it now is that, uh, if we have some needs, and Jane did a survey today of what's needed, and we give them a few days' notice. No, I, we were talking about it today. Jane said, I'll let you go and check what everybody needs, and so uh, give them a few days' notice and they'll show up, and Burin does a good job.
But are they, are they at the same company that didn't give us a, a budget item for next year?
Correct.
And then on?
Well, that's the budget.
This is their budget right here, this budget for the whole year?
No, that's for the two.
Those are two things.
Right, that's for the two.
Exactly.
They haven't given us the price for the upgrade.
Well, yeah, but I think my, but my point was until I brought it up, I don't think anybody asked them for those prices either. Remember? I said, I said at the meeting, we're looking at the Selectman's budget thing. Has anyone gone to them and asked what the budget is next year, and the answer was, oh, no, none of us asked. So, right, after I brought it up, and that's the thing, so, uh, the other thing, I have to say, I was actually in favor of the other company that quoted here. But part of the reason they're busy is because they're good. It's, it's a factor of the business. The reason they're busy is because a lot of companies trust them and use them in their business. If they've been responsive to us, and I think that was a great thing, Jane and Bob went around and surveyed the departments, how has their response been? How have they been? That's the key part, because you don't get the job next year unless you're doing a good job this year.
But you asked them for a budget for the year?
Yes, and they will have it tomorrow morning. I said, can you get it to me tonight? And she said, I can't. The people are not even in their offices. I will get it to you tomorrow morning, so I will present it to you tomorrow morning.
Can we go back to the Selectman's budget? On, on the, on the bottom there, it says printers. We're gonna coordinate the printers, so we have this, everyone has the same printer, so they can buy, buy ink and bulk. Is, is that, is that a part of Entree's thing?
We've been migrating that way. Same thing with the laptops, the computers, all the same brand, etc.
Laptops are now standardized.
Yeah, yeah. How many printers do we have?
But that was certainly an issue that brought up by the advisory committee again, was buying in bulk more than, than each department buying individually, which isn't, isn't a cost-effective way to do anything.
Yeah, but they also referenced paper. I don't really recall, and I, that surprised me because I don't think we buy paper individually. We buy in bulk.
Oh, we do.
So I was surprised they mentioned that.
They didn't mention it.
And it's never been, you know, it's stored down on the, uh.
Not anymore. It's stored right by the bathroom.
Stored by the bathroom, and there's a stack that high, and, uh, half this room wide.
Yeah, so we always have been buying bulk for that.
And we've standardized on desktops.
We've used some of the dead trees and made extra paper too, you know.
I just think.
We've standardized on desktops and laptops. Standardizing on printers is the next step.
That's kinda like, we stated the laptops, they had to get rid of them. The printers, they have to say it, and I do the same thing at work. You standardize on them after they die. I'm gonna run that printer into the ground. I'm not gonna go out and spend seven hundred dollars for a printer just for the luxury replacement when it's working fine at this point.
All right, so we put in, we talked to the advisory committee about a hundred and thirty thousand for the town administrator position. How do we feel about that?
No, their point is that that's the market rating. I think Bob would probably agree that that's right for market rate.
I recommended that because, uh, in part, uh, if you recall, uh, Community Paradigm recommended that number, Bernie Lynch, when you interviewed him. I believe Collins looks at it the same way. I think we talked to Collins about it, and they said, that's about the marketplace.
That'd be for a full-time position.
Full-time.
Well.
Is that where we wanna go?
I have concerns about that. I think that we should, um, we should conduct an evaluation of the present town administrator and, um, what the, what the needs of the town are, um, before we just jump on forward and say, okay, we need a full-time person. I think you're, probably Bob is working certainly more than the hours that we started him at, but I don't know if that's full-time yet, and, and I don't know what the impact of, of COVID has been on that. And I don't know that we've done any kind of an evaluation, so I think that that's the first step when, before you.
I'm averaging about twenty-five hours. Sometimes it's twenty-three, sometimes it's twenty-seven, but it's, it's about in that range.
Is the, is the, um, how, how long is the, the exemption going for? You know, is it for the end of the year again?
Till December thirty-first of this calendar year, so.
All right.
Well, an hour ago, we didn't have enough time to get everything done during the weeks, or talking about bi-weekly because things were piling up so much. And now we're talking about cutting down.
No, I never, I never, I was never presenting it as things are piling up so much. I was presenting it as what the, what, what time is being spent to get us organized for the meeting, and could that time be spent on something else? Not, it, it wasn't, it wasn't an issue of, um, it was an issue that I, I, I didn't think that the town administrator or the town staff should be spending as much time as it appears to me that has to be spent to get the, the minutes going. I mean, the meetings organized. Um, it just, and it's because there's only three days between, between meetings is, is the issue.
Well, I went to town meeting in eighteen, I think, and the town voted a salary for a full-time administrator based on the committee's recommendation. Hired a full-time administrator. Uh, we picked up Bob at a song, I must say, because of his restriction. But I think the town was pretty clear at that time. They anticipated moving in a full-time administrative direction.
So we're gonna keep that money in, so this, this is just budget talk. Uh, evaluate Zoom versus cable TV.
Except, except if you keep that money in, then you're gonna say to the, at the town meeting that we're gonna have a full-time administrator, and is that a commitment that we think we should be making?
We're honoring their request they made several years ago to keep.
Well, several years ago, then you can present it that way. Several years ago, you made a request that you wanted a full-time administrator. Is that still the?
It's gonna cost you if you want one.
Right.
At a minimum.
That's gonna be a little, never be a hundred and thirty because we'll have Bob for half a year, so he'll never be the full one thirty anyhow.
Well, it's, it's a second year. And probably be more. I don't know. I will have to, we'll have to.
The retirement is less though, after your efforts, though. That'll be good.
Evaluate Zoom versus cable TV. But the only thing I have, the only thing I can say about cable, well, first of all, you don't have a cable setup, it's expensive, but the only thing about that is if you have cable and not Zoom, then the people care.
That was my concern, but it's one way.
It's one way.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, were you saying that's a positive thing or a negative? I wanna be clear.
No, 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 no. It's, it's, I think cable's a negative thing because it's one way. Like, for instance, how would you have Marion here? Can I?
Right, no.
Or how would it center lesser than? If, if we have to continue Zooming because of the COVID, you know, how would you get the people in here?
I think Zoom has been a blessing. I would think that we really need to evaluate expanding how we do Zoom, and hate to say it, put it on the COVID expense while we can. If we need more hardware and better hardware and projector, whatever, get it now and put it in place.
Okay, so we are probably all in agreement that cable is not the way to go, that we should go with.
Cable, cable is slowly declining, and my guess is it accelerates people cutting the cord and using
Other means.
Uh, YouTube.
Well.
Or, or some other service.
Well, I mean, it was a drop-off. Last night, I was flipping through channels.
Three in the morning.
It's about four-thirty when I was on my running machine, and, and the, uh, I got to the cable access. These were a Selectman of Wilberham. Well, they're all on Zoom, and they're filming on cable.
Still in the one-nineties.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So I was like, wait a minute, it's on cable, but they, they're filming, they're just, you know, filming the Zoom on cable.
We looked at it a few years back, and I think I mentioned to the board, they rep commenced, oh, you can have cable, it's in your contract, no problem, we'll just add, I think it was like a buck a month to everybody's bill. I'm like, they don't need to vote on it? And they said, no, you can just go ahead and do it on your own. Like, no way.
All right, all right. So this is only on here because it was one of the, one of the tasks on our, on our list. So if we say, if we say we're not favoring cable, but we are in favor of Zoom, and would we continue Zoom once, once COVID is over?
I think we should.
Okay, so we would continue Zoom when it's over, and, but we have to, you think of other ways to enhance the opportunities for people to do that. Okay.
My thought is we move this upstairs, we move the one upstairs down here, and we migrate upstairs gradually. We can have hybrid meetings, uh, which, uh, we, we carry on Zoom for those who wanna stay at home, and also we allow people to come into the auditorium like in the past.
Right, now, that does blend into town meetings, and we talked about this last year. Town meeting is under the purview of the town minister, so we can't make a decision on that without his input. Uh, I believe that's state law, yeah. And it would be, I don't know how you could have any kind of structured town meeting if you had questions perp. First off, then you don't know the registered voter.
Yeah.
So I think that question automatically is answered, because you have to be a registered voter checked in by the registrarist at the first of the town meeting.
But to, to participate in town meeting, you have to be a registered voter. You, you can go and just observe if you wanna go in, and, and, so we could have it Zoomed without comment if anybody had, couldn't attend and wanted to just appear.
At that point, that's cable.
It is, it is probably, yeah, but you know what I mean? So you could do something like that.
Somebody's asked a question, I think Zoom for town meeting has to be one-way only.
Yeah.
It, it can only be a person.
Everybody's muted.
Right. They cannot Zoom in a question to us, right? Right? Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, cuz, cuz you know, the voters.
Five hundred lawyers.
I don't know. Selectmen's reports.
So we've got, uh, planning board meeting, uh, Wednesday night. I already reported on the Historical Society, and that, uh, pretty quiet on my committees.
I have nothing.
Town administrator report.
Okay. You have a copy of the exit interview
Yeah.
that I conducted with, uh, firefighter Sterling. Uh, I did speak with Congressman Neal today about, uh, what?
Name dropper.
You're the one that asked me to do it. Called him, and thankfully he called me back. Uh, anyway, uh, it's too soon to talk about any remarks. Uh, second session with the PBPC today, and that's where this grant opportunity was brought out. We also are circulating, uh, with other towns, uh, letters addressing the whole, uh, Hamden County Retirement Board situation. Uh, we, I was preparing, uh, the reimbursements for the CARES Act expenditures, and Jane, uh, was acting on a parallel track. And, uh, she came in today with a complete, uh, uh, list of expenditures. And I'm just gonna fold that into the report. There's a standardized report that you have to do online. It saved me a lot of time. The last time I did the report for December, it took me most of a day to do it, to assemble all the information and comply with all the bureaucracy that's required. I did give you a, a, a draft of a contract for the police chief as an attachment. We did submit an application for funding for the small bridge program on East Main Street. Uh, the first part of that would be for design. on East Main Street. Uh, the first part of that would be for design. Uh, and then we could get the funding. The funding, by the way, is going to be an estimated seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, my God.
Um, and that would go directly to the tip, so that would be federally funded. So um, and then I've already mentioned the taking companies that have been contacted, but I guess, as you might expect, uh, there's a lot of demand out there.
Hmm.
And companies apparently have a lot of business. And they're not too strong in responding, or they're simply not responding. But I expect to have at least one more, and I hope two more bids for the Academy Hall project. That's the report.
All right. Do we have anything on our ambulance concerns? If we have a citizen with a question about and you mentioned before, this balance billing is kind of a uh, subject of non-clarity to me, if you will. Because you and I had a conversation about a bill that a resident received where the insurance company covered hmm, twenty-seven hundred dollars of the ambulance bill, leaving twenty-eight hundred dollars for the resident to pay. And he said, well, they don't follow up on that bill. The bill is clearly says you owe twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Hmm.
There's no like, this is not a bill. We don't expect you to not pay it. This is a bill. And I'd like some clarity on that. If you feel it's non-balance billing, then it should say this is not a bill. If it's like you go to the doctors and, you know, we usually get five thousand, five hundred dollars for kidney test, but uh, Blue Cross paid us one sixty and that's what we take. That's what I thought we were talking about, something like that.
Hmm.
That's not what this bill says. It says you owe twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Right.
Thank you, Edson, for paying us twenty-seven, which is better than Blue Cross pays. It's a pretty good number. Twenty-seven is actually higher than any other town around here charges for the full ALS two service. So I'd like some kind of the answer for the citizen. Are we balanced billing? Are we non-balanced billing? Or what, what are the responsibilities?
I did have a conversation uh, with two of the principals of the company, and they did send some email. My thought was that we, this would be a good agenda item. Have them come on next week and explain to the general public watching
Excellent.
what's going on.
Yeah, great.
All right.
I also, I also thought that on, after that explanation, somehow we've got to, we should get the word to the public of how expensive ambulances are, because otherwise you have a heart attack when you see the bill. So they have to know the process.
Yeah.
And and maybe you have to get insurance for this, or you have to budget for it yourself, because it's going to be an expense for everybody. Everybody's complaining. I mean, not just this ambulance service, but for ambulance services everywhere, they're complaining now.
I know, yeah.
Hmm.
Intend a motion uh, to conduct, to inter-exec- executive session to conduct a strategy session for negotiation with the non-union personnel. Uh, contract to go with the incoming chief, and we will return to regular session.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Own favor.
Aye.
Tom, Dan, or I?
Very well, aye.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.